I call this meeting of Christiansburg Town Council to order. As we normally do, we're going to take a moment of reflection. And I certainly hope that we will be able to reflect on the incidents in Parkland, Florida, and the need for protection of our students. So we'll take a moment. Thank you. Thank you. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Brad Stott if he will live in his pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We need to add the students from Christiansburg High School. I guess that would be on their introductions.
So we will add that is... We'll do that as AA. We will do that prior to the other presentation. Is that okay with you?
Yes, sir.
Any other... Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
A second. What did you do, a motion or a...
(laughing). Is that your motion?
Yes, I'll make a thing.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
A second.
Councilman Bishop. Councilman Collins. Councilman Hopper. Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter. Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That is six a. Thank you very much. As I said, that will be A, small A, and we'll do that prior to the big A. So, public hearings, I don't think we have any scheduled, is that correct, Randy? Or is that on the agenda for that? Under our consent agenda, we have council minutes on February 13th and February 20th. And we need to schedule some public hearings, I think, for the 10th of April for Norris ordinances or nuisance ordinances. There'd be two of those. We need to reschedule a public hearing ordinance pending town code from March 27th to March 13th. We're going to back it up two weeks. Is that correct?
Yes.
And...
Move it up two weeks.
Yeah, well, we had it set on the 27th. We're going to move it back.
Yes.
Back up to the calendar. And then the proclamation of the 5th Annual Community Development of the Huron Valley. Go give big, NRV giving.
That commotion we approved of the consent agenda is presented and described.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here none. Penelope?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hopper.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
Very good. That is six a. Thank you. This is a portion of our meeting in which we open it to citizen comments, anything that you may have of concern, if you want to bring to our attention. I'll let you, if you are to address council, if you would come to the podium, give your name and address, and give you five minutes.
Everyone knows that setting up front, I step away from my table, it's something I'm coming up here talking about and I'm passionate about. Marty Gordon, 1477 Mary McRae. You know, I have a good friend that lives in Las Vegas, and he sent me something the other day that made me really think. He sent me a jersey for the baseball team in Las Vegas, Nevada. Their names are the 51s. They're named after Area 51, where there's top-secret stuff been going on that not even the residents know about. And, you know, there's not many signs up. There's plenty of fences up and brick walls. You know, and I was thinking about it after a conversation with him, after he saw several news stories and Facebook posts from Christiansburg, Virginia, and even posts on Christiansburg, Ohio, Facebook. You know, we should be congratulating them. We have our own Area 51 here in Christiansburg, one of the most top-secret places, most kept well secret than anywhere. He knew about what I'm getting ready to talk about, but I said half the residents, or maybe more in Christiansburg, don't know about it. For 17 years, we've had Area 51 in a brick building on Independence Boulevard with top-secret techniques being developed and 17 straight championships. I was honored this past week to, in less than eight hours, put together a parade and a little celebration to honor these young men for this accomplishment. But after speaking to several people Monday night in Walmart, they didn't even know about it. And again, I've stood here four times now in the last four years, and I will continue to stand here and encourage you, especially after having the work session last week on tourism, that you look to put a sign up honoring these guys. We're talking about 80 individual champions in 70 years. A lot of kids that have been here for four years have over 200 wins. 17 straight championships. Nobody in the state of Virginia has topped that. There's only one other place in the entire country that's topped it, and that was told to me this afternoon, it's Rhode Island, where a team in a football championship has won 25. But this is the second-best record, as far as we know, in the country, and number one in the state of Virginia. And again, I encourage you to, we need to put something up for these guys. You know, Marissa helped a lot, and a lot of the parents helped very quickly to put the thing together this past Sunday. And we were very lucky. We convinced a lot of businesses to put up signs. And one of the managers just said, "Why didn't someone ask me about this before? I never knew about it." So our own Area 51 exists here in Christiansburg, and it exists at the high school with these fine wrestlers. Again, I encourage you, we've got to talk about it, whether you want to sit down and talk about and do what's done in Salem or Radford, where they put up little signs with everything on it. But we're only talking about one in two years of other state championships. This is 17 straight years. I'm just going to leave you at that. And think about this, what if they'd have lost last week? What would I have been standing here and you've been standing there, or sitting there talking about later? Chucks, we missed the opportunity to put up a sign honoring our current 17 straight champions if they'd have lost. And I pose that question, what if they lose next year? All right, we don't have a sign up. Are we going to not put a sign up because they lost? But I really support, and I've been very passionate about this team this year, and I'm trying to do my best, not only to you guys, but to Board of Supervisors and everybody in this area and this country, to convince them and to show them what we have here in this small, little sleepy community. Area 51, I already looked to make some T-shirts with some aliens on it, with Christiansburg Wrestling T-shirts with aliens. So maybe we can sell some T-shirts and sell some little souvenirs. Thanks.
Marty, you got a good point there. And you did do a fine job last Sunday in helping to celebrate their successes. And hopefully, maybe we can help you out in the coming years.
All right. Anybody else got anything on that? Thank you very much. Anyone else here to address council? I will close the citizens' comments section, introductions and presentations. Harry?
Yes, sir. Hey, Christiansburg High School folks, we like you to stand and introduce yourself, please, and let us know what your plans are, you know, and any announcements from the school that you may have.
So this is student representation?
If you don't mind. Yes, sir.
Do you want to come over here?
Yeah. And get free, it's just us.
And Finn, I promise to keep a mouth shut this time, okay?
(laughing).
I'm Bethany Stewart, and I don't think we have anything from the school to say.
Oh, yeah, you do.
We do.
Yeah, look at the guy sitting right there.
Well, we are proud of our wrestlers.
That's right.
We have seen signs up around town, and I work with Marty at the rec, and we, him and I have been talking a lot about it, and we've been trying to do little special things for the wrestlers.
Finn, I want to talk about how well our girls' basketball team has done this year. We won... We won way more than the majority of our games, and we tried to convince some of our students to go to all these games to support them.
Hey, Finn, how was the support for the girls' basketball?
It was great.
Send them my son's house, the front row's every game.
Yeah, we had tons of people come to the girls' games, more than any past years.
I'm Adam Sumanas, and I just want to talk about the new sports program we have. It's lacrosse. It's not real, like, we've had it like the last couple of years, but it's never been like solely like set, and like, it's just coming up, and I think that's really cool.
So you feel, actually feel the gay lacrosse team now?
It's always in girls'.
Okay. In whatever district league you play in, is that correct? Very good.
Do you have anything for us to help you guys with?
Nothing. We had a meeting today for our club, and we have another request.
Okay. Good deal. Good deal. Now, you had two state champions in track also. Do you know who those are?
Cassidy Cromer and Caleb Cromer.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's awesome.
Had a couple of rough-looking guys sitting back there on third row. Were they, they're some of our champions? Tell us who these guys are.
Marshall, oh, no, no. Kind of nervous. Xander Wythers. Garrett Kuchin.
Yeah. Can you guys stand up?
Stand up.
You guys will probably be here in the next...
Yeah.
That's the team.
One of the things we're going to set tonight is probably looking at the 27th of March as a recognition night, not only for you all and your, the team and the individuals, but also the young ladies that won state championships in, I think it's indoor track, I guess it is. Okay. Very good. So we're going to get on that.
Thank you all. A bunch.
Are you guys from the Student Government Association? Is that where you're from? And does the junior class have representatives as well?
They have a few representatives, but they use us, and they use us just in seniors for our...
Right.
What's your role? What's your role in the student government?
What's your office?
Well, yeah, we're just, well, we're kind of like elected into the club to be representatives.
Okay.
Here's what I'd like to challenge you three to do, is next month, when you come, that three junior, or the same junior, or a junior representative shadow each one of the representative, senior representatives coming. Because those, while you guys are developing senioritis, and we might not see you three again, it'd be nice for the upcoming, because this is a program the town council's trying to get off, the ground where we're involved, more importantly, that our students, or our local students, are involved with their local government. But that would be my challenge, that you guys take back to the school tomorrow, is that three juniors shadow you for our next meeting. How's that?
We've got it on tape.
I'll be going up with Mr. Collins in a few weeks anyway, so, but I would like for you guys to take care of that.
Thank you very much. You did great.
Thank you. It wasn't too bad. You were well protected by the wrestlers, weren't you?
That's right.
Senioritis, man.
Got it. Justin Saunders, President of Downtown Christiansburg, here to present on accomplishments of 2017 and calendar of events for 2018. Justin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you all for having me. Just wanted to come in, you normally see my face when we're coming in and asking for something from you, like a street closure or some form of support, but I wanted to come in this evening to tell you a little bit about what we've been up to in the past year and what we have planned for 2018. And I think all of you know me at this point, but for the folks in the audience who don't know me, I'm Justin Sanders, I'm President of the Board of Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated. And I'll tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do, and then I'll brag on ourselves a little bit about our accomplishments for the past year and tell you what we have planned going forward. So talk a little bit about what our vision is at DCI. We want to establish downtown Christiansburg as a destination, an economically viable central business district, and a vibrant center of our community for culture. And really, we go about that through a variety of different ways, and I'm not going to read this very wordy mission statement to you, I just want to focus in on a few key words: public advocacy, political involvement, and community events. And I think something that we've done very well as an organization over the past five years is the community events side of things. We were very well-known for the things that we do in downtown, but we do a lot of things behind the scenes as well, including this public advocacy and this political involvement. And ultimately, we want to make downtown Christiansburg a destination. We want it not only to be a destination for our residents here in Christiansburg, to make it a really vibrant, fun place to be, but we also want it to benefit the county and the town in general. We want tax revenue coming back into downtown. We want people spending their money in downtown. We want them living downtown. We want them working downtown. So when we approach our mission, we really have that duality in mind, that we're not only working for our citizens, but we're working for those that visit our community as well. So ways that we work in advocacy and engagement, and these are things that, as I said, happen really behind the scenes and people may not know about us, but we're really working on issues that impact downtown merchants and residents. We try to have an open-door policy with those folks who locate in the downtown community to really be a conduit back to town government. We want to have our ear on the ground to the things that are happening with our downtown businesses and bring those concerns back to town staff and back to council. We want to promote downtown Christiansburg as a business location. We are very blessed that our downtown has a very low vacancy rate, but we want to ensure that people that are looking to locate in downtown know the available properties that are open, know the networks that they need to connect into in order to locate downtown. Members of our board serve on the planning commission, so we have a direct involvement in the decisions that are being made that impact our downtown. We were instrumental in helping to create the Christiansburg Farmers Market a number of years ago. We provided support for the local foods, local places input sessions. Along with the College of Architecture and Urban Studies at Virginia Tech, we did a downtown parking study two years, three years ago, that provided some valuable information to the location and availability of parking in our downtown business district. And we are engaged in the planning and development projects that are related to the future of downtown. We do that by working with staff and working with council on a variety of different programs, working with the upcoming downtown master plan, working with the wayfinding study, and a variety of different opportunities. So 2017 was a big year for us. We turned five. I think we finally learned how to run instead of just walk in our fifth year. We increased, and I think we had the best year ever of working with town council staff and our local partners. We had a full calendar of events. We were able to bring back events that, due to funding, we weren't able to provide in 2016. Over 12,000 people participated in our program, in programming last year, which I think is a great indication that people are hungry for things to do in downtown Christiansburg. We were providing those opportunities, and people came out in droves. We got into that political advocacy that we talked about, and we formed the candidate questionnaire that we sent out to all of prospective council members. And we were able to provide their answers on issues that were related to downtown that were important to business owners and residents, and we were very happy that all of the candidates responded to that survey, and we were able to get those information out to the community. The organization also was the most financially strong last year, as we have been in our entire existence. We have more money in our bank account than we've ever had, and we were able to take the money that we did make in 2017 and invest it right back into our community through our events. And we are continuing to distinguish the DCI brand. I think more people know who we are and what we're doing. I think in the past, we've had a little bit of name recognition issues. People think we're an arm of the town, and we're not that. We work with the town very well, but we are different from the town. We are speaking for the citizens in our community. So these are just an overview of some of the events that we did in 2017. We brought back our Wine and Artisans event. We hosted this event once before, back in 2015, inside the Old Town Mall, but we really wanted to move it out onto the street. So we were out on Hickok Street. We had 15 vendors last year. We're hoping to grow this year, and we are still accepting applications for Wine and Artisans 2018. We've already surpassed the number of vendors that we had last year, and we're still taking applications. So there's a few more images there. We were able to utilize working with local property owners, available space in one of the parking areas in downtown, again, showing the relationships that we've been able to build in the business community to be able to bring these events downtown. Our Movies in the Parks series was back in 2017, had not been in existence since 2015. We were able to provide two movies to the community. Unfortunately, we were rained out for Sandlot, much to many people's chagrin, but I will let you know that's the first movie we'll be showing in 2018. So we're very excited about that. This was a great opportunity to showcase a great asset that we have in our community, and that's downtown park. After our July movie was rained out, we were able to participate with the town Parks and Recreation Department in the replanning of downtown park. Several of our board members and supporters of our organization were a part of that. So that's just showing again, we're not only giving back to our community by putting on these events, but we're actually getting our hands dirty as well. And then there's the Food Truck Rodeo, the thing that we're probably most known for in our downtown. We had our biggest and best year in 2017. We had the most vendors that we've ever had at 20 trucks. We had some amazing live music. There's an aerial shot for you of Main Street as we were just getting started. I wish we had gotten those a little bit later in the evening so you could see how crowded it really was downtown, but we estimate anywhere from 8,000 to 10,000 people on Main Street for those five hours. And that, as Mayor Barber pointed out at our Talk of the Town event, that's direct economic impact in downtown. People are staying around after the event ends, they're going into McAdoo's, they're going to Charlie's, and they're really investing in our downtown in a very tangible way. And then our Talk of the Town series. We started this up last year as a new event. This was just an opportunity for us as a board to really gauge the pulse of our community, really hear what downtown business owners, downtown residents, and downtown stakeholders want to see from their community, what to see from their community organization. So we were very happy to have many members of council present last Thursday night. I think we had an amazing discussion about what we want to see happen in our downtown community over the next five, 10 to 15 years, and what you want to see DCI do as a leader in that movement. So really, at the heart of what we do, we are not the silver bullet that's going to fix downtown Christiansburg. We know that. So something that we work very hard at is establishing sustainable partnerships here in our community, and this is just a small listing of the folks that we've worked with over our five years to really build that downtown movement. I just wanted to point out a few in particular. We could not do what we do without your dedicated staff. And from Parks and Recreation to planning to communications and public relations, we get everything we could ever need from your town staff, and we get every bit of support that we could ever ask for from council. So we want to say thank you for that. We are a very small, rugged group of people that are trying to make this work happen, and we can't do it without the support that we get from the town. So we want to say thank you for that. Also, I want to point out Ignite Academy, and I know I said this on Thursday night, that when the Main Street Baptist Church became vacant, we really had a big question mark in the middle of our downtown. And what Mike Larkin and his students have been able to do with that facility is really turn that place into an exclamation point in the middle of downtown. We have a volunteer force of about 120 people on our register. 85 of those are Ignite Academy students. So I think that talks to the impact that they want to have in this community, so I definitely want to make sure that they are recognized. And our support from the Montgomery Museum and other local groups, we can't underscore that enough. We work with them on a variety of different projects. We assist them with their events, both in manpower and promotion, and we hope to continue to do that as we go forward in 2018. So something that we are working on as an organization this year is capacity building. It's very easy for organizations, when they've been in existence for a number of years, to say, "Wow, we did a really good job, guys. We want to just keep going and keep the status quo." But our board has determined that we want to use that five-year benchmark as an opportunity to grow. So we are currently working with the Internal Revenue Service on pursuing tax exempt status as a nonprofit organization. That's going to do a number of things for us. That's going to allow us to receive charitable contributions from both residents of Christiansburg as well as the business community. And the long-term goal there is to investigate the possibility of becoming Virginia Main Street community. And Councilman Stipes brought this up Thursday night very eloquently, that DCI can be the organization that brings some major grant funding into this town, being a nonprofit organization. So we're looking to position ourselves to do that. As I said, we're a ragtag group of six. All of these programs and all of this programming happens because of a dedicated group of six individuals that serve on our board, and that crew of 120 volunteers. So we're working to increase the size of our board by recruiting some new members, building our membership base and our volunteer support. Part of that, we're working with the Virginia Tech Office of Economic Development, you met those graduate students the other night, on deciding what we want to be when we grow up. What is our vision for our organization and our vision and for our role in Christiansburg in the years to come? Part of that, we want to get into the trenches. We want to learn more about what our downtown business community needs. So we're looking at forming an advisory board of downtown business owners, and Marissa and I talked about that the other night as well, identifying leaders in our community that maybe aren't as apt to come and talk to council. Members of the community who maybe take to Facebook to express their frustration more than in the council chamber. We want to be that conduit. We want to help people know that their voices are being heard as property owners in our downtown. And one major thing that we're looking at doing is how we integrate Cambria and the off-Main Street businesses into our vision of what downtown Christiansburg is, because we've got some amazing resources over in Cambria, architecturally speaking. I think we realize a lot of what we lost when Meghan passed away in Cambria. We want to channel the energy that's happening in Cambria into the larger efforts that we're doing as Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated. So again, we're not just an events organization, as I said, but we do rely on our events to get our name out there and to really make an impact in our community. So this is our 2018 events calendar. As I said, our Wine and Artisans event, we're still accepting applications for artisans and food vendors for that event. That's going to be April 27th in downtown from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. You'll see me next month, asking for the street closure for that event. Our Movies in the Parks series will be back this summer. Again, that June 22nd date, we're going to be showing the Sandlot. And we're actually working with an outside movie vendor who's got a back-to-school movie that we're looking at for our August event. And that's going to be a really great opportunity to welcome all of our students back. We've heard from some of our great Christiansburg High School students tonight. We want to celebrate them in August, so we're looking at that event as well. Food Truck Rodeo this year, September 21st, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Main Street. Our application deadline for Food Truck Rodeo doesn't close until June 1st, and we've already got 18 confirmed trucks. We had 20 last year, so just giving you an idea of how much bigger and better we're going to be this year, so we're really excited about that. Our Talk of the Town series will continue on May 17th and October 18th. We're looking at some event locations for that as well, so look for more details about that coming out. And then we're also looking at an opportunity to partner with our downtown churches for a possible Christmas or winter event. We've got some beautiful architecture in downtown Christiansburg in our churches and in our businesses. We really want to give them an opportunity to shine and showcase what they're doing in the community. So that's in the initial planning stages, and I hope to be able to report back a little bit later in the spring or summer about that for you. That's all I have for you this evening. I'd be willing to take any questions from council or from the audience, but this is our contact information. Please follow us on Facebook, that's the best way to keep up with what we're doing. And I'm always available to you if you have any questions about what we're doing with DCI.
You've done just a wonderful job for the town, and a lot of people just don't appreciate all what you do, and just, this is a great evidence of it. I tell you what, I've been to most of the food, corporate, the food rodeos, and to me, it's just amazing, you know? People will stand in line for 45 minutes to get a hot dog. And it just, you know, and it just shows the people here in the town are just crying for something like that. To tell you the truth, I was hoping that maybe you would have more than, you usually have one this year, maybe one in the spring or something?
Yeah, so we start planning for Food Truck Rodeo the day after the Food Truck Rodeo. It's an extreme undertaking for us, for our resources, and for our board. You know, we've got a board of six, we all have full-time jobs, we work in and around Christiansburg, and I just wanted to touch, I meant to touch on this, we've got a lot of talent on our board. We've got urban planners, architects, economic development specialists, food chemists. We've got a wealth of resources, so this is why we want to make sure that you guys know that we're here as a resource for you, as council, and for town staff as well. for you, as council, and for town staff as well. It's a matter of resources, Councilman Hubbard. We are a small board, we have a small budget, and we would love to be able to work with one of the property owners downtown and get a parking lot where we don't have to shut down Main Street every Friday night, but have live music and a food truck down there every Friday night. That would be great, or maybe the first Friday of every month. It's just a matter of resources, and that's something that we're looking at as we build our board, as we build our financial data, our financial backing over the next couple of years. That's something that we can hopefully do and provide to the community.
Yeah. Would you name your six people who's on the board, please?
Yes, so there's myself, there's David Franchisht, who is the initial founder of the organization, who took a step back when he went back to graduate school. We have Ellie Travis, who's an economic development specialist at Virginia Tech and lives in Christiansburg. Anne Sandbrook, who sits on the town planning commission and works as a food chemist at Virginia Tech in the food science and technology department. We have Wendy Jay, she works with Virginia Community Capital. So she gives us a lot of great resources about possible financing for the businesses that are coming into town. And our newest member, Andrew Warren, sits as the liaison for the town staff to DCI to really help that communication back and forth between what the town is doing and what we're doing as an organization.
Yeah, that's great. You know, you hear this presentation, and this is for the audience, usually I'm talking to council, but now I'm talking to the audience. As you hear this presentation, and I'm thinking, what's the catch? What's the catch? All this great stuff and all this increased energy and activity, and I don't think there is a catch in going down and seeing the partnerships that you're forging with Mike Larkin and everything. And each year that goes by, there's more energy to it, but I think, I think you're on, I mean, these events sound very exciting to me, and I'm not a millennial. And, but that's what, why people wait 45 minutes for a hot dog, it's not the hot dog, it's the experience. So I appreciate what you're doing, and I think, I think we can do some wonderful things. I was going to say beautiful, that sounds sort of weird, but I think we can do wonderful things together, and especially with our new, you know, a new hire here. But anyway, it was a great presentation, Justin, and I think, I think I see great things ahead.
Our dirty little secret is that none of us are from here. We all grew up elsewhere and moved here either for opportunities with our careers or to come to Virginia Tech or Rappi University, but we've all chosen to stay. And selfishly, we want this to be a good community for ourselves, for our children, for our families, but at the same time, this community's given us a lot, and we just want to give back and make sure that Christiansburg understands how much it's appreciated from a citizen's standpoint, and give our citizens a reason to want to stick around even longer.
And from what I've heard from everybody that talked about the Food Truck Rodeo and everything that y'all do, one, one, I mean, we have to, we can't just have one a year, you know?
Sounds like you got two volunteers right here.
I'm not speaking...
Not sure how deep his pockets are.
Every time we close the street, it's a success, you know? And you folks are, you know, you guys make it happen. Guys and girls make it happen. Thank you very much.
Now, I just want to echo what, I think, what Brad and Harry already said, and from town council, and I'm sure staff and the community, we appreciate what you guys have brought us over the years. It's a huge community builder, in my opinion, and that's something that, you know, Christiansburg, usually the Wilderness Trail Quonix does a great job, but we needed something to fill those gaps here in the year, and, you know, that is something I hear. Any events you guys put on, the Movie in the Park, and the Food Truck Rodeos, I mean, and even the event that I missed last week, as Harry and I were in the regional commission, I've heard so much about it. And like Brad said, it just builds a buzz and gets around, you know, word of mouth. So it gets exciting, what you guys are doing. But if you could pass that along to your board, and Justin, we appreciate you. You're a great representative, and thank you for mentioning the town staff. Town staff do an incredible job working to make sure these events go off without a hitch. So, Ray, if you could pass that along to them as well.
You know, another thing that I've found good here, and I see Chief Sisson is here tonight, when you offer beer and wine during these things, and there was a great deal of hesitation by the council several years ago when we started this off, and was very, very close on. And as far as I know, and Chief Sisson, you can correct me, I don't think we have had any problems at all, have we, with over indulgence?
Very, very limited, I should correct.
I'd be remiss if I left the podium without thanking the police and Public Works for their hard, hard work behind the scenes. It doesn't always get noticed, but we appreciate your support as well.
All right.
Thanks, bud.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Justin.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have Kim Thurle, from the Community Foundation.
Right, from the Community. Good evening, everyone, and thank you. That was really informative, Justin. I am here tonight first to thank you for the proclamation in the consent agenda for the Giving Day, and I felt like it was a good time to come and share a little bit about what the Community Foundation has been up to, and just provide you with a little more information about the Giving Day. So for those of you who aren't familiar with the foundation, we are one of 700 community foundations across the country, and we primarily do three things. So first, we work with donors to help meet their charitable interests in the community. Most of our donors, in fact, probably 95% are all based in the New River Valley, and they largely work with us to set up endowed funds for their interests. And what we do is we use the interest from those endowed funds each year to grant out grants to nonprofit organizations, as well as to some local government projects, and also to scholarships for college-bound high school students. And then we also offer a series of support for community building, which I wanted to mention a little bit more later. So just to give you an idea of the size and the scope of our organization, we have currently had about $10 million in assets. Last year, we raised about over $1 million, and we gave out $145,000 in grants and scholarships in the community. But what I wanted to talk about is kind of what falls into that last bucket of in-kind support that we provide to the community. And we do that in primarily three ways. So we provide professional development opportunities for nonprofit professionals on a monthly basis for free or no cost on a variety of topics. A lot of local government staff will also attend these sessions, like for Thursday. And then we, because we recognize that a lot of our donors and the funds that we hold do not always meet the priority challenges or needs of the community at any given time, we decided we needed to establish a new fund, which is an unrestricted fund called the Fund for the NRB. And what we're doing is we're using that funding to support collaborative initiatives, so collaboration between multiple organizations, governments, businesses around four key areas: early childhood education, around aging, around nonprofit professional development, and around hunger relief and food access. We see that there's a lot of organizations working in these issues, but don't often have the opportunity to work together on these issues. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about was Give Big NRB. And so what we've realized, as kind of Justin even mentioned earlier, there's a lot of organizations in the New River Valley nonprofits that I would qualify as ragtag. You know, they're small organizations that don't necessarily have the fundraising and the marketing capabilities of a larger organization. And so what we've done is we've partnered with Click and Fledge, which is a company based in the CRC, to develop an online giving portal, so basically an online website that allows donors to give directly and securely to nonprofit organizations in the region. So it opens up an online platform for online giving. And over 125 organizations across the region have profiles on this page and participate in receiving gifts in this way. And in a way to incentivize online giving, each year we host an annual Giving Day, Give Big NRB, and this year it's going to be on April 18th. And it's 24 hours of giving. Since we started the day four years ago, we've raised over $800,000 for the community. And what's really nice about this portal is that it really allows anybody to give. The minimum donation size is $10. And what we do as a foundation is work with corporate sponsors to offer nonprofits incentive prizes for participating. And this encourages nonprofits to dig deep in their networks and encourage them to participate in the Giving Day. And so we give prizes for the most money raised, the most unique donors, we have grants by county and city. And then we have a grant for the best video about the organization and for those, sorry, that's 100% for donations. So just to give you a sense of what we did last year, in 24 hours, we raised $220,000, and just under 1,800 people participated in the day, and 115 causes were supported. And so our goal this year is really to spread the word about the Giving Day and to increase the number of gifts made. So just to give you a sense of just the Christiansburg alone, the organizations based in Christiansburg, not even those that just serve the Christiansburg, but those based here, are listed here. There's 18, including ourselves. And I would say, in relation to Justin's presentation earlier, Christiansburg serves as a nonprofit hub for the region, and so this is a way to support those organizations. So I have two basic calls of action and requests for support. One is sponsorships for prizes. We're still seeking corporate sponsorship, so if you have any ideas of folks within that would be willing to support a Montgomery County or Christiansburg grant on the Giving Day, that would be great. And primarily, we would love your help in working with town staff to try and help promote the Giving Day through staff as well as through Christiansburg residents. So I will leave it there. Thank you so much.
Questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Dr. Sharon Scott, the executive director of the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce, present the Chamber 2018 report. Dr. Scott, how are you?
If you sound a little mazely, I have caught the cold that everyone else is having. So bear with me. Good evening, council members, mayor, and staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. We're a membership-driven organization. I report to the chair and carry out the actions prescribed by the board through the chair. Your Chamber of Commerce strategic direction and financial health have been broken for nine years. You may have heard from the mayor and the reports that he comes back from the Chamber and turns his eyes on. That our assets have increased by, increased by 114%. Our debt has decreased by 41% over the last four years. And last year, we hosted 119 programs, including committee meetings, events, programs such as Bunchel, which raises funds for our Teacher of the Year and scholarships. In 2017, and you have a copy of our 2017 program of work and annual report, we had a very aggressive program of work with 55 objectives, of which 96 were completed in the calendar year. Two items were rolled out in 2018. One of those has been completed, and the other will be rolled out in March. That is the best places to work in Montgomery County. You want to focus and highlight one, the greatness of this community. As you've heard this evening from our athletes, from our students, to our business communities, this is a great place to live, and we really want to focus on that and get information out across the Commonwealth. So we're a business community, and we're pleased with our businesses. We're pleased with our community last year in bringing the marketplace property to sale. I would often report to the town manager and to the mayor what my constant nagging was finally getting through. Your former town manager called upon the chamber when the water rates were going up and asked if we could communicate that to our business members, and we were able to do that. We want to educate the business community. We've also worked with the town manager, previous town manager, to work on a year-long shop-local initiative. Shop small and shop local isn't just about one Saturday in November, it's throughout the year. And we're losing valuable tax dollars when people shop online. So we really want to do more. We can't change consumer buying behavior, but so much. But if we can educate people to understand when they're shopping online, that's money that's going somewhere else unless it's with Amazon. And Amazon at least collects the state sales tax and returns a portion of that to the locality. Your chamber membership is close to 650 as of tonight. I just left another event this evening to be here. We're continuing to pay off that loan that was taken out in 2009 following the devastating financial loss due to embezzlement and mismanagement of funds. There's been more of a symbiotic relationship between the chamber and the town of Christiansburg, and that is greatly appreciated. And I thank you, Mayor Barber, for your assistance in building that relationship. Our current staff, when at full complement, is four. We do have a membership services position that's open right now, and I'd love to talk to anyone who's interested in the sales position. Our chamber is often thought of to be a member of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, or, like you, Justin, we're some arm of the government. That's not true. We are not a member of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. We are a member of the Virginia Chamber of Commerce. We're not affiliated with Montgomery County, other than we share the same name, and they are governmental members, just like the two towns. We are an independent chamber serving Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and all of the businesses located in Montgomery County. We have a small percentage of our members that are also found outside of the county. Chambers of Commerce have been affected by disruptive technology since the mid-1990s. Your chamber, however, is resilient and continues to make the transition to serving the business community in a more effective manner. Grace Mortensen-Court, our marketing communications coordinator, is working on the new website for the chamber right now, which will have a link to the towns and the county. We're proud to be a part of this community. This year, your chamber plans again to deliver 119 programs and events, to bring businesses together, to build relationships, to encourage and support buying locally. Our mission is the promotion of positive environment for the operation and growth of business. I've also provided for you our strategic direction and our program of work for 2018. Our core values, which support the mission, are enhance member success, build and promote integrity, build community, create value. And then one of the programs that we're very proud of is our, excuse me, Leadership near River Valley. This year, we launched our largest class with 31 participants. The mayor and the town manager often speak in August on Government Day. This class, for the last six years, has promoted a local nonprofit. The very first time we introduced this concept was in 2012, and that year, their return on investment was one for every $1 invested in the program. There was a $3.33 return to McKee. Today, that ROI to McKee, because two of those participants stayed on the board and were able to fulfill their mission and vision, today it's roughly estimated that for every $1 that was invested in that program, there's a $53 return to that local nonprofit. that for every $1 that was invested in that program, there's a $53 return to that local nonprofit. It's not about raising money. It's about teaching nonprofits how to build capacity. And that's what these young leaders do. We solicited information from our members last August and September, and the board used that data to help build that strategic direction that you have in front of you and the program of work for 2018. The board has reduced the number of committees to avoid member burnout and board member burnout. There are five internal committees to the Chamber. The Executive Committee, which has seven members; the Board of Directors, which has 18; the Finance Committee, which is comprised of the Executive Committee plus; the Awards Committee, which is comprised of three years of past recipients; and the Chamber Location Committee, which is an ad hoc committee. All of these are described in the packet. Since the first of the year, we have referred nine new businesses to the Marketplace Property Operations Manager. Last Wednesday, we have, we referred one business to a commercial realtor here in Christiansburg. And we're currently working with another business to determine which of the two towns best fits their profile for a warm handoff. Our 2018 external committees and quick highlights are: our Business and Membership Development Committee; our Website Design and Relaunch; Continued Support to Buy Local; Encouraging Member Engagement and Enhancing Our Programming; and our Ambassador Team; our Education and Talent Committee. We want to make sure that you guys sitting right here on this row know that you're already in the best place. You've heard that people went to school somewhere else, found a job, and wanted to stay here. You don't even have to leave. This is the best place to be. We have jobs for you, really cool jobs. That committee, that's what it's about, education and talent. We want to support affordable and accessible quality childcare. We'll support education, especially STEM and career awareness, those initiatives at our public schools. We're supporting the ACE program at NRCC. We want to enhance the entrepreneurial education, and we want to enhance the image of those working in the skilled trades. Our Legislative Committee wants to build relationships with the town, county, Virginia Tech, and Roanoke. And with regard to the policies that affect all, we want to work with other committees to make sure that we're not leaving anything out there. Infrastructure and transportation, we want to expand and promote the expansion of broadband in our community. Every child should have access to broadband. We want to continue to support passenger rail. How amazing is that going to be in just a few years? And we also want to improve local connectors, relieving some of the challenges that we experience as local commuters. It's our goal to be the nexus, to bring business and government to the table for the purpose of problem solving, and again, to enhance the business environment. I hope you take a moment to take a look at what we're doing. It's always a pleasure to have Mayor Barber with us on the fourth Wednesday of every month, so we get to see him tomorrow. It's always wonderful to look out across the audience the evening of the annual meeting and see your faces there. I see some of them. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You good?
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is committee reports. Do we have any reports from Central Businesses, I guess?
Yes, I'd love to talk about Central Businesses. I had one meeting, just to let you know, getting caught up to speed, but we have some great progress planned. We are working on the farmer's market and looking at closing Hickok Street on a permanent basis and trying to make it to where we can use it all year round, multiple events. I think working with DCI would be a fabulous thing because now we might not have to close Main Street as often. So, that is something that's definitely in the works, and we're very excited about that. And we have several other things planned for future meetings.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other committees that met in the last couple of weeks that we need to talk about? We have a plethora of committee meetings coming up during the month of March, so...
Let's include the Regional Commission meeting. You want to take some of it, or? You want me to go along?
Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
Regional Commission was Thursday night, of course, and as usual, great information comes out of that. Kevin Ver does a great job. That's how we got Park Smith here for our work session for the Small Business Development. But a couple of things I want to mention is that we talked about. Not a lot was shared amongst the members and folks out there. The Regional Commission is comprised of Floyd County, Town of Floyd, Pulaski. We meet once a month, Giles, Narrows, you name the town, Blacksburg, Christiansburg. It's our region, and that's how we support each other. And this committee is set to support us. Christiansburg's a major player in that committee. But, you know, it really helps towns like Narrows and Pulaski to succeed with certain studies that they need done or certain grants that they need to pursue that they don't have the funds. But we all work together. But some of the things we discuss, Dr. Scott talked about the NRV rail. There will be a meeting, a regional meeting, on April 26th at the Aquatic Center. I'm not sure what time, but that, anybody who's interested in the rail coming to Christiansburg, and you can find the time to go, please attend that. That's a big deal. One of the things we discussed, and that's what I like about Kevin, he gives you the pros and cons. We all know that the rail is open in Roanoke, but the rail commission, Amtrak, federal government, they're looking at those Roanoke numbers, and Lynchburg, of course. And those numbers have to grow, seeing NRV residents using that. There's actually, the Regional Commission is putting together a marketing committee to put proper marketing out there on, you know, how you can ride the rails in Roanoke. And of course, there are, there is transportation down to the Roanoke Valley, but that's going to play a pivotal role in getting the rail here in the next few years. And these meetings like this, of course, how they're attended, you know, it's basically getting the snowball to the top of the hill started. And once they see that there is a lot of people who want to participate, that's the fastest we'll get the rail. And of course, Christiansburg, out of our whole region, is the place, two sites have been pointed out, Randy played a pivotal role in that. So, when we do eventually get rail, which hopefully will be sooner rather than later, Christiansburg will actually be your up, not Crawford, Pulaski, but our town will be. So, that's a, that's a big deal. Other than that, the annual meeting for the Regional Commission, we typically try to find local venues. We went to Giles last year, and we've been out to Floyd the year before that. But we're actually going to do it in Montgomery County. It's going to be at Sinclair Farms. And of course, that's where we present our awards for such, for, you know, our local, it could be a local politician, a local business owner, but we have some major awards that will get out for citizens of the valley. And of course, Harry and I are pushing our candidate this year, which I'm sure we'll all be behind that. But I hope to see all council members attend, and of course, that rolls out to our administration and staff as well, and planning permission. So, that's it from the Regional Commission.
You're good. Any other committee reports? We go to discussion and action by mayor and council. The first is council action on monthly bills. And you see before you, in the list that was presented, we have 2,524,226.22 worth of regular monthly bills that we need to act on.
Make the motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in the second?
Need to split the...
I got you here, buddy. I want to do it. Okay. You've got a motion in the second to pay the original bills presented with exception. I got it. Is that it? Want to get them? You want to do them both at one time?
Can I get the second on that one?
Second.
Ready?
Yes.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you very much. We have a separate bill that we need to act on. It is the amount of $3,022.83. It was from a December purchase, the Aquatic Center, to marketing online. Is that moved?
Second.
And a motion in the second, new discussion. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Epstein.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
I have one. Thank you very much. New discussion and action by mayor and council. We had two ordinance amendments or an ordinance amendment zoning to allow the research, experimental, or testing lab, including animals. That has been withdrawn. And subsequent to that was a second request for economic development pertaining to the above. It has also been withdrawn. So, that is done. Staff reports?
Rail meeting that Henry mentioned earlier is at 3:00.
Thank you, Randy. Didn't have it in my notes. Thank you.
Just to bring up, I have been talking to community housing partners in regards to the property for rail, and we would like to have an appraisal done of that property. Community housing partners has offered to pay for half the appraisal. The town would pay for half. Just want permission from the town, but council to go ahead and proceed with having an appraisal done.
Sure, absolutely.
Also, I'd like to set two public hearings. One would be on March 13th, and these are both in regards to the Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority. The public hearing on the 13th would be for the agreement in regards to amend the Articles of Incorporation for the Authority. And the public hearing on April 24th would be for the resolution in that same regard.
Okay, so, we need a public hearing on the 13th of March?
Yes.
And then, on the 24th of April, the final?
Yes.
Okay.
Make the motion to set a public hearing.
Second.
A motion in the second. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins? Councilman Hubbard? Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Good.
Very good. Madam Attorney?
I have nothing.
Any other staff? Who's tweeting? We're progressing on the budget. Are we getting there eventually?
We're progressing. We're getting there.
Very good. Very, very good. Council reports. Mr. Collins?
The other thing I have is, what do you guys plan, once you graduate from high school? What's your plans?
Do you mean just like college?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or whatever you want to do.
Not Bates Week.
Yeah, not Bates Week. That's right, yeah.
Are you talking just about, like, just me?
Yeah. What do you want to go to school? What do you want to take? What do you want to do?
I plan to go to UVA, and I entered into the Kenyansian program.
Okay, okay. Good deal. Thank you.
I'll probably go to NRCC for like a year or two, and then transfer to tech.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
And you, you applied for that ACE program?
Yes, sir.
Good move, buddy. Good move.
Ms. Stewart?
Where are you going to go back to?
I saw her coming.
I am planning to go to Virginia Tech for human development and either to be a high school education teacher or a social worker.
Good deal. Thank you all. That's all I have.
Seven wrestlers.
Oh, yeah.
I had no idea.
You're considering, I assume there's some scholarship offers out there. Do y'all haven't decided? Is that correct?
We're undecided.
Well, Garrett's got a few more years, right?
Yeah, I'm a sophomore.
We'll see him back here for next year.
Yeah, that's right.
Xander, you seen?
Xander, what do you think, buddy?
I might decide what I'm going to do right now.
I'm sure you got offers. Keep a close eye on us.
Very good.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes, last week, I think it was Thursday, I attended the Hair Fair Direct Center, and it was a good turnout. I talked to several vendors, and they had an appraisal saved for the location. And also, we had, look like, new vendors this year. That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Showalter, use up your best of the gas.
I think I did. But I will say that, you know, since we have a crowd here, you know, the thanks to staff and of course, council with major support, the curbside recycling program is going to be bid out. So, I would expect in the next year, if you guys want to pass it along to your parents and those of you who live within town, you're going to have that option to recycle curbside. Just take it out to your curb, which will be huge for our landfills in the local area. And it's something Blacksburg's been doing for years. It's just, it's a very popular program that I've heard for years, and I've been behind. So, I want to appreciate Randy and the staff for pushing this forward this year. Thank you.
Ms. Sacks, have you, you got anything else going on?
Yes, yes, of course. I recently attended the DCI meeting, Talk of the Town, really learned a lot from Justin, so thank you for that and also your presentation. We are actually working on a few more collaborations in the future. And also, just congratulating the wrestling team and both of the Kromer young ladies. They're not here, but good job, guys. It's a lot of work to do what you've done, and I'm personally just very proud of you. And it was a pleasure to be invited to your event and see the enthusiasm. And you have so much support from your parents and your coaches. That's something really to be proud of. So, thank you.
Been sitting on what Henry said about recycling. You know, they've said, once there is a curbside recycling, recycling doubles, triples, and it just makes it so more, keeps all that out of the landfill, and it's just going to be really good for the community. And Henry is the one that's really pushed for, although as to how many years.
And Corwin got on, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Stipes?
I was going to simply praise the goings-on at the high school, the 17 years in a row, and the track winners and so forth. But y'all are setting goals and achieving them and continue to do that. And everything you're doing now is just setting the tone for the rest of your lives. And I see some head nodding going on, but that's really, this is where it starts, right here, setting and achieving goals. And it never ends, especially when you start these habits young. So, congratulations. And you've got a community that is very proud of you and is behind you 100%.
I would like to, council's permission to add to the agenda on March the 27th is a championship celebration, not only for wrestling, but the two Kromer girls that won state championships. It's kind of the time of the year that we recognize those in the winter sports. So, that's all right. I've already reached out to the athletic director at Christopher High School to get the information that we need. So, that's what we do there. Also, on the 27th, we have Chris Tuck and April Motts from the County Board of Supervisors wanted to come and do kind of an annual report on, or a State of the Union for the county. I think Chris has been here a couple of years now, and he's going to bring April, who is his vice chair. And they wanted to address council. So, kind of a heads up on that. All right. Mr. Stipes?
A request for a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation as specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. This particular closed meeting is being held for the discussion of the town manager position.
A motion?
That is a motion. Second.
And a motion in the second, discussion. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you. We're going to take about a three, four minute recess before we get into closed session. I will ask.
I got to, let me see. We need to reconvene, I make a motion that we reconvene in open meeting.
Second.
Got a motion in the second and discussion?
Second.
We're good. Madam Clerk, we're coming out of closed session.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Okay, we're reconvening.
I make a motion to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg meeting in closed meeting, to the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting.
Second.
A motion in the second, and a discussion. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Council action on the matters? Mr. Huppert?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a nomination for the town manager of...
It's a motion, not a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion that we nominate Randy Winfield for town manager.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Now, this, I think maybe, I don't know, you had it in there, this appointment will be effective March the 15th. That gives us time for satisfactory contract negotiations or contract background checks, whatever else. So does that fit a nice schedule for the town as far as that goes? Changing horses in the middle, I mean, changing, you okay?
Yeah, it'll work.
Okay.
Make it work, won't you?
Very good, well...
Yeah, my preference is that it's at the beginning of a pay cycle, but that's, make it work.
Okay. We can adjust that. We can adjust. We could adjust.
You have to tell me at the beginning of the pay cycle.
Can you do what?
I just wanted to say, Randy, that you can see the council has voted 6-0 in your favor, and we appreciate the work that you've done for us last nine, 10 months, and we know that you're going to continue to do the outstanding job that you've been doing, and we have all the confidence in the world in you, and we support you, and we'll look forward to some good experiences.
Thank you. Just thank you to all, thank for your support, thank staff for their support. Appreciate it.
Best you can tell me you want the job?
I'm sorry.
Congratulations, really.
Congratulations.
You deserve it.
We're on the 12th. This is the right day for you to do this thing.
You have the perfect day for me to do this thing.
March 12th. We can have everything done by the end. Very good. Anything else to come before council?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.